13, 2025, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Chippewa County. Mr. Lawrence, sir, would you lead us in pledge?
Happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Nepper.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Here.
Commissioner Trainer.
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Here.
Next on the agenda additions, deletions to the agenda, or shall we approve it as presented?
Will we approve as presented?
Support. Motion in support for the agenda to be accepted as. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Approval of county minutes, April 17, 2025, page one on your packet.
I move we approve minutes.
Support. Motion and support approve minutes of April 17, 2025. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Correspondents received in clerk's office, page 14 and beyond.
I move we acknowledge the correspondence received in the clerk's office and distribute as appropriate.
Support. Motion and support to forward the correspondence received in clerk's office to the appropriate place. All five are from evil. Any discussion as such? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Next, public comments. Anybody who wants to speak, if you would come up here and do so. We have three minutes per person.
Good afternoon, and I'm Phyllis Reed, and I'm president of Neibish Island Improvement Association, and I had three things to share with you. I brought in a copy of our Neibish Island Improvement Association yearly newsletter, and I was hoping that you'd enjoy reading it. We send one out every year, and along with our newsletter, I wanted to extend an invitation to please come visit the island. It's hard to get to know us if you don't see us on the island and see what we're like. And we're really a very nice group of people, and we'd love to show you around if you want to come. We chose the community center. We've been working collaboratively with Sioux Township. We raised money. They raised money. We raised over half the money to redo the community center, and we're pretty proud of it. Plus, the money for it, we put in all the labor that we could possibly do without things that we were allowed to do. We did. Took quite a while, and it looks very nice. The second thing is, I wanted to make you aware that one of the goals from our mission statement is to look, or in charge, is to take care of the health and safety of the Neibish Islanders and their properties. And I can, I'm just a person that does about one thing at a time. My brain can't take the overload more than that and feel like I'm doing it well. So now that we're done with the community center, I want to address the fact that we don't have an emergency plan on the island. If there was any kind of an evacuation or a big problem, we wouldn't, we don't have any way planned to deal with it. And so I would address that to our board, and one of our board members is working with Mr. Postma, and we've interfaced with him several times. We're going to be meeting in June with Mr. Postma, the St. Mary's River Keepers, the Coast Guard, and Sheriff's Department to talk about what we should do next. One thing Mr. Postma wants to know is where can any boats land on the island if there need to be an evacuation? And so we've got people running around. We also don't have good cell service, so we don't get 911 calls. When you're on the east side, we get Canada. That's a real issue when you've got someone who's really injured, like my husband was, to get Canada and get redirected. It takes, it takes time off, and time is life. So we're really addressing that seriously, and so that you know, last week we had a fire on the island, and it was, it was, it's fire season, and we had a big wind hit a tree, hit the tree, hit an electrical wire, and started a fire. And we were able to take care of it eventually very well, but it was a wake-up call that we really need to be better organized, I think. And so we are working on that. We wanted you to know that. And then lastly, I want to thank the commissioners for listening to us because we know that some of you really make a huge effort, and all of you think about us, I do believe, and listen to our concerns about the ferry schedule. They're, they're real because it addresses the sustainability of our island. That is the real issue. How can we keep going forward with less? So I just wanted to thank you for that and appreciate that you listen, and ask to please come on over. We'll take you for a tour for a pretty nice island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Melder from Neibish Island, of course. I just wanted to reiterate what Phyllis said. Thank you for listening. You did a great job appointing the last Yuktah board member. He listens. He doesn't always agree with us, but he tells us when he doesn't. He's gathering facts all the time. Wanted to thank Mr. Trainer again for coming to the last Yuktah meeting and voicing his opinion about our concerns. And I really keep thinking about January of 2020 or April of 2020, and I think Mr. Martin, Mr. Shackleton, you were on the commission then too, when you said that Yuktah needed a reset, and you set precedent by removing Mr. Egan. And at that time, Mr. Egan was advocating for us, so that was quite a shock, and I believe I wrote, at least you, Mr. Martin, at the time. I'm not asking you to remove anybody. I'm asking you to be very careful when you appoint members to the Yuktah board because if they don't listen and they don't want to talk to us and they make, some of them make rude comments to us, it's, it's awful. It's just awful. So I'm begging you to be careful about who you appoint. I'm also asking you, again, to consider somehow evaluating board members on all the boards, not just Yuktah board, but in particular, the Yuktah board for us. We have one board member who misses 25% of the meetings, and then when he gets back, he's, he's lost. He doesn't know what's went on, and he admits it. We have another board member that's spoken rudely to us, like I said. They just don't know. They roll up right now. They're so, the board is, besides Mr. Mills said, they're so, they don't understand their role at all. And I know they've had training. I've been on many boards. They don't get it. They don't get it. And I don't know what to do about that. So just be careful when you appoint board members. And let's see. The Yuktah board at that time, maybe it did need to be reset. I'm not sure if I agree with that, but it's going to need to be reset soon if, if we don't get Yuktah board members with different attitudes and just willing to listen to us. Some of them are not even willing to listen to us, so just, I'm just asking you to consider that. Thank you, and thanks for your support.
Thank you. Thanks. Yep.
I'm going to ask you guys something. First, I'd like to bring up a couple points. I don't want to give you a civics lesson because I'm sure you already know all that. You know, the reason we have a Congress is so no one man or woman can be king or queen. And it just, I can't stress it again, the deal about Pete Paramsky signing the deal to get a new ferry without board approval. That just, it's troubling to me. And what I want to ask you for is a forensic audit of Yuktah. If there's nothing there, fine. But it seems like the bookkeeper, when she's asked questions about stuff, she can't explain anything. That's concerning to me. Numbers, whether it's numbers of ridership on the ferries or buses, or when it has to do with money. And why is there so much more money in the operating fund than in the, what would you call it, the slush fund or whatever? That's what I'd like. I would like a forensic audit of Yuktah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have any in Cyberland who have their, their hands up?
We have Louis Balance and Matt Keller. I'm going to select Louis Balance. Oh, it looks like Lyric Hessler also has their hand raised, so there's three. And I'm going to unmute Louis.
Um, I was going to say, Hessler, you're muted, it looks like, on the screen. I figured we go ladies first, if you would like to go first, Ms. Hessler.
I'll yield.
Oh. I can hear his voice, but.
Yeah, he'll yield.
Where?
I'm unmuted. Are you able to hear me?
Okay, there we go. We'll come back to the person. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Hessler.
Thank you so much. I was privileged to stand before you in person in November and enjoyed meeting so many of you and appreciated your time and certainly have appreciated your support for the needs of Neibish Island. Of course, I'm speaking on behalf of my family on Neibish Island. I'm actually, have another member of my family who lives near me in Washington, DC on this as well because access to Neibish Island is very critically important for us. And I know you all have heard that and do understand that, and I'm so grateful. What I do want to just reiterate is my support once again for continuing to apply pressure to, for consistent, which means to me, hourly ferry trips to and from Neibish Island, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, for all the reasons you have heard over and over and over again. I know that we have so many folks working behind the scenes in that if monies were suddenly to be available, I would ask you to continue to apply pressure so that they can be dedicated to Neibish Island simply for the sake of providing consistent ferry trips and service for accessibility helps. All the reasons you've heard. I appreciate so much you're giving the time and energy to this, and I know you can empathize greatly with that. I simply wanted to reinforce the fact that many of us who do not live in the area follow this very, very closely and depend on that. When I had to fly in in November to assist my grandmother who'd broken her hip, instead of flying into Chippewa, I couldn't do that because there wasn't a ferry trip that synced up with the only flight in from Detroit that day. Had to fly into Traverse, rent a car, drive north, do all that. That's for multiple family members who have had to do the exact same thing. Just basic things like that, syncing up with local transportation, I think, is a very realistic and reasonable goal, and I appreciate your consideration. That's all I yield.
Thank you. Next hand up, doesn't have a name. Who's in the upper left?
Is it Louis Balance?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here. Just wanted to thank you for reconsidering putting my antaracquisition back on the agenda, and I will be available for any questions or concerns. And if it passed, if you can please pass that along to the other UP counties, that would be really appreciated as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you still have a hand up there?
Yep. Just need to unmute yourself, Mr. Keller.
There's something across the camera up there. I don't know if that's interfering with it. Love technology.
Mr. Keller.
There we go. Am I unmuted? Thank you. Hi. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Keller, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Matt Keller. Said when you're meeting a couple months ago, just like to speak again. I'm the president of Neibish Pioneer Association, which is the Little Neibish Property Owners Association. About 100 members we have representing, so I'm trying to represent the association for increased ferry needs for all our membership coming back. Primarily Little Neibish, it's probably heard. We've described before, it's primarily seasonal residents over there, so, pardon me, primarily the summer residents that come on up. But many families, generational families, been coming up from three, four, three, four, five generations in Neibish, going back to early 1900s. Everybody today continues to love Little Neibish and just really wants to have better access to the island. Particularly that everybody like myself, I live down in Ann Arbor, commuting up on weekends. It's really essential people have later ferries, particular weekends, they'll get up to our properties on the weekends so we can access them. And many of my, my peers and their, their families as well, who drive from either downstate or out of state, or people fly in, I really need later ferries to go access came to the island, because usually they take all that day, that particular day to travel just to get to Neibish. So I want to just really talk more, you know, on our end, seasonal people, just on the economics of things. We're seasonal residents. We don't have any kids that go to schools and can't vote for a membership of, whether the board representatives up there. But we do pay taxes. We pay significant taxes. Little Neibish particularly is primarily all waterfront property. So we pay, you know, premium taxes, all waterfront. We love our waterfront property. We realize we pay more in taxes for it, but we do contribute greatly to the county up there. Largely 80%, over 80% of our taxes go towards schools up there. I'm all supportive of the schools to continue with that. But we certainly would like representation to be able to access the island to get to our residences. And as well as we, you know, contribute significantly to the economy up there. When we come up, we travel, we buy food up there, we buy gas, we, groceries, we spend annually when we come on up there, as well as we all have, we pay for a lot of services up there. I hire people up there to help. We put the dock in the water every year, take the dock out. We have people help, you know, hook up our cabins, open up our cabins. We provide a lot to the economy there as residential owners up there as well. We store our boats up there, and every half, pay for all our maintenance on boats. It's done up in, up in the Sioux area as well. And as well as, remember myself, I'm hoping to retire in a few years, have a number of my peers are. A lot of us are, been talking about for years, spending a lot more time at Neibish, which we'll be doing. And a lot of us about remodeling our cabins and adding on to cabins. So we're all looking at, been planning to, you know, contribute significantly to the economy and building up there. But with limited access, well, some of us might be reconsidering whether we're going to make those investments down the road as well. And more recently, I did hear too about that, sounds like Neibish should be getting some broadband internet access to the island next couple of years, which sounds great. I think that's a great growth opportunity for the island. Primarily Airbnb places, I think, as far as businesses on the island things, but many of my peers and all, and our kids work remotely these days, and with greater broadband access to the island, that's really going to open up a lot of opportunities for people down the next couple of years when we get broadband. So that was part of the infrastructure bill that got passed back in the Biden administration, and I've seen it in rural counties down here in Southern Michigan where broadband is going in.
Yes, sir, we're going to have to.
Yes. Okay.
Limit your time here.
I appreciate your time, consideration, and, and hope you push the resolution that you passed back in December. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Hey. Oh, she's got her hand.
I should be unmuted. Can you guys hear me?
There you go. You're good.
Hi. My name is Sarah Karazinsky. I am a third generation, if you will say, Neibish Islander. My grandparents bought property, and my first visit to Neibish was when I was three weeks old by boat because the ferry schedule didn't allow for my parents to come over at that specific time. I have been visiting regularly, spending weeks upon weeks on the island every year. My husband and I have both invested into the property and are now property owners on Neibish and looked forward, also like Matt mentioned, in, you know, some of our later years to be able to be on there full-time. But there are two major dilemmas that come up when we, when we talk about that. One being the board for Yuktah, so our inability as an island to be heard on a regular basis by the board. I have been working to contact them for five-plus years on a regular basis, and I can count on one hand the times that I've received responses. I have had conversations on the phone with Pete where I was basically told that I do not understand business. I am unable to articulate or understand how a business works, and that I just need to be happy with what I have. I would go back to what Phyllis and Lori and some others shared, where the board really needs to understand what their responsibilities are. And I guess I implore you guys, knowing that you are placing people on those boards, to ensure that all of those individuals do understand the responsibility that they bear by taking on that position. They have a responsibility to check numbers, to push back, that is their civic duty by joining that board, and also to interact with the people that they are supposed to be supporting, not to blacklist us because it may be difficult to answer some of our questions. The second piece is really just around access, and, you know, there's been a lot of concern from my extended family who do not live in Michigan about my grandparents coming back up in the summers and staying on the island due to the restrictive nature of getting off the island if something was, if something happened. Even in my personal case, about a year and a half ago, my husband actually was driving up, and I had him go to the pharmacy because I could not get off the island back in time in order to get a drug that was for a kidney infection after I had my son. So I think there's, there's a lot of things going on there, and to speak a little bit around what Matt said about involved, being involved in the community, the lack of ferry service does not allow me to take my children and show them the Sioux because I have to be back. It also puts me in a position where I bring my goods all from lower Michigan to northern Michigan because I'm not going to spend my time four hours to go grocery shopping. I recently bought a couch down in Grand Rapids because I couldn't get it delivered because the ferry schedule is so poor. There are resources that would be going into the community by people who are not full-time residents if the ferry service was available to do so. So we are, we are cheating our own community up there of valuable money going into it because Neibish Islanders aren't able to access their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's one more commissioner. Sarah Tyner.
Where?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. My name is Sarah Tyner. I am a resident of the Washington, DC area. As you heard, my sister-in-law, Lyric Hessler, spoke just a little bit earlier, and I simply want to reiterate that having an extended ferry schedule that runs consistently and hourly between the hours of 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM will help not just the Neibish Island residents, but also give their families and those that need to get goods on and off the island an opportunity to, to do so not just conveniently but well and consistently. I think that the people on the island have a right to the dignity of being treated fairly and having equal access to life-saving, in some cases, life-saving services. My family and I go and travel to Neibish Island at least once, if not twice, a year, and when we come year-round, in last winter, for example, when we came, there was a substantial challenge in driving and getting to the island because the ferry schedule was so restricted. So I, again, I respectfully appreciate y'all's time, but I would very much like to reiterate just the, the need to have an extended and hourly, consistent ferry schedule that not just services through the summertime, but also in those off-season months, especially in the months where the vulnerable need emergency access and care. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good online?
We're good. There are no more hands raised.
Anyone else? Once, going twice. I will declare public comment closed. Next, Administrator Church, your report.
Just your regular monthly reports on there from Animal Control Health Department, Sheriff's Department, Veterans Affairs. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Anyone have any questions, concerns? Well, business? Page 24.
If I'm through you, if I could just ask, I had talked to the administrator about her recommendation dealing with this steering committee appointment that we have before us on the agenda, and I guess I'd ask Kelly, do us go ahead and explain that so that we could consider your recommendation?
With the limited number of people that we did have apply, I had just suggested that maybe instead of trying to define the roles, that you put each of these members on that steering committee and then assign them terms of office just based on the alphabet. So the first, the first person in line would have a term of office through 26. The second person would have a term of office through 27. It is a rather large group, and it's already going to be difficult enough to pick a time for, that everyone's available. So I doubt that everybody's always going to make every meeting, but this way you're going to have more people giving their input instead of limiting it down to, I think we had talked about 10, but I think that would be a lot of work to get down to 10.
I know it didn't mention eight to 12, but anybody else have any ideas here? This is, these are new waters.
No, I, I, I would move that we follow the recommendation, appoint full slate, and, you know, though, I, I, I think as a committee, they'll probably, some people will fall out, some people will be more interested. There might be two people that are experts in the field, and they'll work together, you know. I think you'll all, you'll all work out, and it's, it's, it's new, new territory. I, I, I think if we have an issue, we need to fill in some blanks. We can fill those in later.
But one nice thing is we do, Commissioner Kenever on it, and I think that will be a very important voice for us to, to listen to. No, no pressure.
Yeah, that's all to you.
Commissioner Trainer, do you have any input here or anything at all?
I agree with Kelly. Put them all on there, and that way, there's not enough people there, and some of them, the other ones will fill it in.
Was the motion supported?
No.
Okay, whatever you got on.
So, so if we have 16 here, which we do, so we're looking at possibly going every other one?
Yep. Mr. Baker, it would be 26. Ms. Benton would be 27. Ms. Burke, which 26. I mean, just go right down the line and, and assign it, and then we can work from there. I think it seems to be the easiest at this point since we are in uncharted waters and figuring this out.
I don't have a better idea.
Yeah, I know where I'm at too.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, I know we have 16, but what are the odds of all 16, or even a dozen show up?
Right. And again, for anyone who's wondering what we're talking about, the opioid settlement is providing money to the city and the county in settlement of opioid misuse. The companies, I guess the pharmaceuticals companies were found liable and are paying money to public governments, and money's coming into the city and the county, and we need to distribute it in a manner as prescribed by the judgment, which is things like prevention, prevention of drug use, prevention of treatment of, of. Education. Yeah, all that. Yeah, thank you. But there's lots of strings attached, and there's some eligible recipients out there, and we just want to do the best job we can, and we're asking for volunteers to get involved and help make recommendations on how to distribute that money.
That's about how much money again, Kelly? That's about how much money again, Kelly?
It's going to be about ninety thousand dollars a year for the next eighteen years.
Okay, so we're talking real money.
Commissioner Kenever?
I was just gonna say something that kind of popped in my head, just more for transparency sake, there are. Uh, individuals on this list that, uh, represent organizations that I think will apply. And so I think it would be important to make sure that. You know, that there's abstentions and voting, uh, you know, things like that. That is expressed to the steering committees. I don't know if we have certain. Rules or anything that can be provided just to make sure it's.
Kind of, I was gonna ask.
They should, well, I, I, I would suggest that one of the first things that committee does is adopt Robert's rules of order. And then, um, I think that would basically include. Um, things like abstaining from things that you would have personal gain from or from an organization that you're representing. So, but, but good point, that means that someone's going to have to take the bullwhin horns here and get that committee organized. And that's going to be a task that might be.
I mean, there's some very good people here.
Absolutely.
You never know, you know, what you're going to get a lot of times. There's, there's some really, uh, top shelf people here.
Yeah, I was very pleased to see the list as well. Good, good folks.
Yeah, I think we. We're good with our. Motion and support, correct? Does anybody have any, what they'd like to add to it? Uh, I'm sorry.
Should I abstain since I'm on the list?
Cause you need to vote on the rest of them.
Okay. Yeah, no, you, no, if we were making an appointment to a committee and you were a candidate for that, you could go for yourself, right? Yeah, so yeah, you don't have to.
Maybe it was just two of you, sixteen. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. New business resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six correctional officers week, page twenty-six. Frankly, these are the people that allow us to sleep at night.
Yeah, I'd be pleased to make the motion to recognize the correctional officers as part of our law enforcement community and, um. You know, I've got the deepest respect for our law enforcement community and thank them for everything they do for, for us. So I made the motion that we approve this.
Delighted to support.
Motion and support, uh, correctional officers, week May fifth through the twelfth. Those of you that lived here, uh, when they almost had that prison break and those guys were headed towards the infirmary. And, and these guys at great risk took them down. And, um, that, that's kind of. What they do every day. So anyhow, any other discussion or comments? Uh, we would need roll call on this, please, sir. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorrance?
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Um, next resolution twenty twenty-five dash. Dash oh eight, supporting bringing Amtrak to the upper peninsula of Michigan.
I think it's. Go to.
Oh, MPSC, okay. I get six and seven trans. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, approving the MPSCS integration amended and restrained agreements. Anything we need to know on this, Kelly?
Uh, no, this is for the central dispatch board of directors, uh, and this will give, uh, Mr. Postma the authority to sign. On the agreements that are in place underneath this, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, I'm sorry, we gotta do, uh.
You have a motion.
Okay, motion.
Yeah, I move, I move, we. And I move we, uh, pass this.
Prove the MPSCs.
Support.
Support now. Roll call please.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorrance?
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Uh, next resolution number two oh two five dash eight, supporting bringing Amtrak to the upper peninsula of Michigan, page sixty-six.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve and support. All support, motion and support. Uh, any discussion on, uh?
We had a gentleman ask us to, uh, adopt this resolution. Um, to be quite honest, I think the likelihood of Amtrak running trains into the upper peninsula is highly, highly unlikely. Um, but this resolution, uh, can't hurt urging it and it would be nice if they did. So we'll just pass a resolution and throw it out there.
Yes, I'd like to, I guess. Add a little bit more to that. I would, I would personally prefer that, uh, we slightly modify some of the language. I know it was kind of, um, I, I didn't get a chance to read it until earlier today, but I, I, um. I agree that I support him, you know, I'd love to see Amtrak do this investment. I think I'm a little bit pessimistic as well, but, um. The big thing that I guess I would like to modify is it, it talks about, there's a little bit of some grammatical things that I'd like to. Uh, clean up just to make it look, uh, you know, better for the people that are reading it. Uh, there's also, uh. Very detailed specifics on, um, arrival times, departure times, scheduled times. I don't personally think that those are, um, something that we should get into those details in this resolution. And, uh. I think, uh. Some of the other phratology, just about our economy is a little bit. Over the top, however, I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Mr. Balance's efforts. Um, so at the very least, if we do pass it, I would like to recommend passing it. Uh, with the striking of the final sentence of paragraph three regarding arrival times and departure times. Uh, because I think that's not something that, that would be something that Amtrak would decide if they're, if it is. Uh, otherwise I, I would also, I guess, volunteer if the board would like to just, you know, come back next month and modify the language a little bit to be. More in line with reality perhaps of Chippewa County and bring that back, but either way I'm.
I, I think that the correct procedure would be if you would like to table it for, for the next meeting. And then take that time to reword it a little bit. I, I would support you on that if you wanted to do that.
Okay, I, I would make a, I would. You already made.
That's okay. We have a motion on the floor, but you can move to, um, table it.
I would make a motion to table it and I, I'm happy to work with or correspond with the individual that sent this and. Slightly modify some of the language to bring back. All support them.
Motion and support, um, to table resolution. Two oh two five dash oh eight, um, until next month, uh, so that it can be updated. Uh, and quite frankly, just cleaned up. Yes.
Can Mr. Trainer support both motions?
Yeah, you could, I think so. You can support the table.
Okay, I wasn't.
If not.
Yeah, no, it's not. I don't think that's a problem with a table of motion. It's only when you, um, are reconsidering.
Okay.
So we have a, a motion and support, uh, for resolution twenty twenty-five dash, uh, oh eight being tabled until next month's meeting. Any further discussion on that?
No discussion on the table of motion.
Oh, sorry. We, do we?
We have to vote. Voice vote.
Oh, we're doing a voice vote. Okay, that's why, do we do a voice vote? We're doing that. Okay, uh, all those in favor? Aye, aye, most, motion passes. Uh, next layer, support Detour Township Economic Development Corporation, page sixty-eight packet.
I'd like to make a motion about that.
Support it, see? Support, any discussion?
I hope that happens. Tonight, that's a nice development.
So we've got someone I'd like to say about it.
Oh, absolutely.
I met Bill today. He hasn't been at his house. He's only half mile from me, so I stopped BS with him. He's all excited about it and I was at Drummond Island last week at their board meeting. And I found out that Drummond's only got seven years of stone left. And they're done. So that really puts the pressure on Bill to get his up and running so he can fill that void. For the stone that's going to be missing out of the eastern U P. And Bill told me about another four cores that'll be gone within a seven years also. So it's gonna be a great need to have out there, but he'd be able to pick up employees from some of the other places, I think, and, you know. That's what all I've got on that.
Maybe get a deal. Maybe get a deal on some equipment.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to, uh, recognize the, uh, Chris Olson and the EDC board for working on this with him. It's a, I think it's a fairly big task to, to put in this grant application and, um, I also know, um. The developer's been chatting with different folks in different industries as far away as Newberry and, and other places that might be able to. Bring future economic development, you know, with this project, so. I just wanted to recognize the EDC.
As they should be, they do a fine job. Any one else? Okay, um. If we could, please, roll call vote. Detour Township Economic Development.
Is it a resolution?
Thought it was.
Oh, just letters for it.
My bad.
You don't need a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion passes. And finance claims and accounts, Commissioner Shackleton.
All right, so we have a, again, a pretty long meeting of finance claims and accounts, so buckle up. Uh, we did meet on Tuesday, May thirteenth at four thirty PM with a quorum present. Myself, uh, Justin Nepper, Damon Lorrance, Jim Trainer and Jim Martin were present. No members were absent. Others present included Karen Senkus, DJ Welton, Tim Moher, Katie Bowers and Kelly Church. Uh, we approved the agenda, uh, we took public comment, which there was none. Uh, the committee reviewed the county treasurer's investment reports, the visa billing, travel requests. And the OPEB DTRF quarterly report, no action was required. The agenda items, starting off with the health department, the committee reviewed a request from the health officer. Uh, Senkus to update and place a cap reimbursement on the pink ribbon funds policy of three thousand five hundred dollars. Administrative policy one point nine nine point zero one three. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence that we do so and supported by Commissioner, Commissioner Nepper, Nepper. And the, uh, uh, residue or the motion passed and I would so move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Most, motion pass.
We then had two requests from the health department for pink ribbon distributions. Uh, one for three thousand five hundred dollars, one for seven hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer that they'd be approved. And that passed, uh, the motion carried and I would so move.
Support, motion and support, uh, for thirty-five hundred and seven hundred thirteen seventy-one. Didn't we put a cap on this or something?
Yeah, that was previous.
Okay.
We did that.
I'll set there. Very good. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion passes.
We then went to health department write-offs. The committee reviewed the annual write-offs for the health department. They're for services, uh, that are more than a year old. The, so the services to, or the write-off amounts are fifty thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and nine cents. In total, public health, ten thousand nine hundred seventeen and sixteen cents. The shack, six thousand two hundred nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Home health, twenty one thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and thirty cents. And hospice, eleven thousand seven hundred dollars and eighty-one cents. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Lawrence that we approved those write-offs. And the motion passed and I would so move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Most, motion passes.
North Care Network, uh, fiscal year twenty-six liquor tax fund requests. Uh, CCHD, the Health Department Harm Reduction Program, uh, thirteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars. Fifty, a circuit drug court, nineteen thousand three hundred dollars and seventeen cents. The committee was given a brief review of the, uh, reduced amounts for this year liquor tax request. And they were based on percentages of funds received last year. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to accept and forward the liquor tax funds requests as presented. Uh, and that passed and I would so move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion passes.
The committee reviewed a request from the fiftieth circuit court drug program of eighty-five thousand dollars from the state of Michigan. These amounts usually come back lower than what was requested. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence and supported by Commissioner Martin to approve the request. That motion passed and I would so move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion passes.
The committee reviewed the minutes of the Department of Veterans Affairs Committee from April twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-five. A motion passed to move twelve thousand dollars from wages in the MVAA grant to outreach for the veterans. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize that change. Uh, the motion passed and I would so move.
Support, motion and support on veteran affairs, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion pass.
The committee received a grant recipient notice to the Chippewa County Sheriff's Office from TC Energy's social impact team. Indicating a five thousand eight hundred forty dollar award from the Build Strong application submitted by Captain Justin Frucci. Is that right? The grant money will be used to purchase boat life-saving equipment and the funding will run through the marine program. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize the acceptance of that grant. The motion passed and I would so move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Close, motion passes.
The commit, committee reviewed the requests for proposals for veterinary services. That cover weekly shelter visits, sterilization and general consultation. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to authorize and approve. The request for proposal for those services, the vote, the motion carried and I would so move.
Support, motion and support on the animal shelter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion passes.
The committee reviewed the bid summary for the central server. Two quotes were received timely and met all requirements. The quotes were over budget and information systems were asked to see if better pricing was available. A quote from Avalon Technologies of fifteen thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Plus new software transfer of a thousand dollars from Core Technology is saving the county. Six thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents and is still a thousand dollars over budget. The committee was asked to approve the bid and it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin. To approve that quote from Avalon Technologies, uh, a voice vote, the motion carried and I would so move.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion passes.
Committee reviewed the Fed Grant Package Access Request Form and the Federal Contractor Nondisclosure Agreement. This package is a process that allows federal agencies to access and utilize security packages for cloud services. Offered authorized by the General Services Administration. It's essential for agencies to ensure that cloud services and mobile device management meet the necessary standards and are compliant. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper and supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize signature. For that Fed Grant Package Access Request and Nondisclosure Agreement. On a voice vote, the motion carried and I would so move.
Support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Most, motion passes.
The committee reviewed the updated quote from Wolverine Power Systems to replace the county building's generators radiator. At a cost of fifteen thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and four cents. The Building and Grounds Committee previously reviewed this project for replacement in the spring. Making sure no additional problems happened with the generator. Wolverine Power Systems noted that parts on the generator are becoming obsolete and that the only option was rebuilding until they are able. To find this unit, which we are. Take making a motion to purchase. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve that purchase of the generals. Generators radiator on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Motion and support any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Post motion pass.
The committee reviewed an agreement between Chippewa County and Dr. Kyle Raycraft. For the doctor provide backup medical examiner services in Chippewa County. At the rate of a hundred and twenty five dollars per incident.
Decedent.
Decedent is, oh, I see. Okay. That makes sense now that you say it. But it's not not a word that I think I've seen before. That obviously refers to someone that has is now deceased. Plus costs related to travel required for on scene investigation, including mileage paid at the I R S approved rate. It was moved by Commissioner Neppers, supported by Commissioner Lawrence. To approve and authorize the Medical Examiner Services Agreement Agreement, which between the county and Dr. Ray Craft as presented. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support on the M A C, on the services. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Post motion passes.
Finance claims and accounts for the county and the Health Department month of April. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin. To recommend the approval of April county bills and payroll general claims. Four hundred forty one thousand two hundred and forty and ten cents. Other fund claims, four million nine hundred twenty two thousand three hundred twenty one and ninety five cents. Payroll, six hundred and five thousand seven hundred twenty and forty five cents. And Health Department claims, two hundred ninety one thousand five hundred and twelve and eighty seven cents. And payroll, one hundred thirty two thousand two hundred seventy four and sixty nine cents. Total claims, six million three hundred ninety three thousand one hundred eighty dollars and six cents. And acknowledge the monthly financial reports received by voicemail. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? Those in favor paying the bills? See if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post motion passes.
We moved to committee comments. Commissioner Nepper commented on the recent Neva Shion an email. Addressing the questions of responsiveness by you to board members in more detailed minutes. He also brought up the recent foreclosure of the motels and apartments which are causing renters. To be displaced and those renters not having any support or services to help them. Discussion followed, including the laws posting requirements, a recent lawsuit that was dismissed. Clarification that was not the county or judge turned off the utilities. And that legal counsel had advised the county not to put the utilities in the county's name. The foreclosure sale date is August eighteenth. And that was under committee comments, and you probably have a little update for us at the end of the meeting, I'm guessing, Kelly. Or not. But but that was that's something that the situation has changed on. Chairman comments, there were no comments from the chair. It was moved by Commissioner Neppers, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to adjourn. The meeting was adjourned at five P M. I would move that these minutes of the Finance Claims and Accounts Committee make their case two thousand twenty five be accepted and approved.
Support. And support to accept the finance accounts pants any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Post motion pass. Next, we have permission report on meetings as board of presidents and general comments.
I've got a couple.
Mr. Trainer, sir. I met with Parker Fair Baron twice in the last two weeks. First was a check on the Wolf legislation. That one is sitting in Washington. Just waiting for the approval of President Trump to sign off on. That'll be the end of that one. Township meetings were hot this month. That's all I can tell you. Didn't matter where I went. They kind of got out of control as they're rolling and. That's the way it went through the whole month. Just something in the air, just.
Maybe it's because you were there.
But everybody seemed to work out in the end on all of them. And one thing I did find out, Ken Ross has got a problem. They don't have a place to put their fire trucks. So I went to work to try and help them with Parker. That was part of my reasoning for going down to Makonau City and then St. Agnes, but the second trip. And in St. Agnes. Karen Cheeseman was there. She's the head of my Michigan St. Agnes, the C E O. And she said that. Now my brain forgot it. Agriculture.
U S D A.
U S D A. Thanks, Kelly. That was a source for grants to get it. So I went to Ken Ross, told the supervisor what was there. He said, well, he tried last year. And he couldn't get anywhere with them. They don't do anything with fire departments. They finished the fire department for St. Agnes. They got a brand new building. And that was through the U S D A. But I got nowhere. Sounds like putting my time in the do the work for it, and all they had to do was come up to the U S D A and apply.
They're aware of that?
Oh, they are. Okay. So I had a talk with the supervisor before the meeting started the other night. So that's where I gotta leave that one out.
Is that?
Don Gary?
Yeah.
That's right. That's our local guy.
And that's where she got the money through.
Okay.
I'm on say, Don's the only one left in that office.
Yeah.
Took the early out.
And it was the luck of the draw that I happened to be there when. Mrs. Cheeseman was there. Otherwise, I told Parker about it, and she was there and listened in and said, that was the way to do it. Get with them.
Don's Don's a good guy.
The, you know, if I could jump in. Yes, sir. Part of the situation is there is that the they've been using space they were running from the E D C. The E D C wants that space now for equipment for the airport. So I don't know if the E D C has any flexibility with other property or other buildings or whatever, but. They they did put on the ballot to raise millages, much to, you know, build a new facility. Unfortunately, that failed, and they are in a pickle. And I'm glad you you were able to. Maybe give them some hope, because I'm not sure which direction to go, but again, I I'm. I feel I feel like the E D C's got a lot of property out there and that they. Even on interim or temporary basis, they perhaps could help out.
And they gotta have a place that's heated. That's the big deal with.
I mean, Lord knows, we we left a building because we moved all the equipment out. You know, to the sheriff's building, all the sheriff's equipment. I mean, we got out there because it wasn't a great building, but you know, for a temporary or. Yeah.
Except to cover with a tarp. Keep the guano off it.
Would you do that for?
One that went down by seven.
No.
I can remember. Yeah, that was a recreation.
And that one really got heated that meeting, Ken Ross.
They got a place. Those trucks are six figures. I mean, you can't leave, you know, exactly. You can't leave it out, and especially in the winter time. Yes, sir.
As long as we're done with that conversation, I certainly hope that the E D C will. Potentially provide something. I was just gonna chat really quickly about the. Hotel motel situation. I spent a fair amount of time on the phone with. Number of individuals, including the property owner affected. And just wanted to get a feeling for. How many people are still in, were still in the various units over the last few days and without electricity, so on and so forth, and what type of things was happening? I just wanted to say thanks to our treasurer, our our county administrator, city, city employee. A lot of people have been. A actively kind of daily basis trying to figure out how to address the. The foreclosure and I mean, it's the most of what I've heard is kind of an unprecedented amount of units all. Pretty much coming offline all at once. I mean, there's many people affected and so what I. And I went up and kind of checked out some of the properties yesterday, too, and there's, you know. At least one or two with people trying to run generators to keep keep their apartments on. Most of the conversations that I had. There are just literally no available options for people in the short term. According to the. Property owner, he estimated about fifty percent of the units people had. Moved out and found a couch to surf on or a family member to crash with, at least temporarily, but then the other fifty percent have no place to go. So. Community Action Agency was trying to find, they had, I believe, Joe Nolan mentioned to me that they had ten vouchers available to. Or ten of the maybe people or apartment dwellers had qualified for that, but he needs to find people that are willing to take the vouchers landlords. So anyways, it's a pretty big disaster and. I'm I guess I'm just hopeful that we can. That the community, you know, can try to come alongside as many of the people that are still kind of stuck in these apartments with. Services on kind of on the line and figure out how to find them places to go. Don't have any good ideas, but I've been just talking a lot to folks about it. I will say my one good idea is to try to just identify, you know, instead of kind of making it a macro issue, I always am a believer, we have, you know, a small town. And a lot of times you can kind of identify individual cases and help individual people figure out where to go and what to do. So I know a lot of people are working on that.
That's where ideas are, because I was while you were talking, I was thinking. You know, we've got. Two elementary buildings that are going to be vacated. In the next couple of months. And and I know. There's a place in Iowa we stayed where they actually took an old high school and they turned it into a hotel. Like each classroom was outfitted. With a bathroom and stuff like that. I wonder if we get creative or if some community gets creative, because these folks aren't. You know, they they paid their rent as near as I could tell, correct me if I'm wrong. And and then I begin to ask. Where's the money? If all those vouchers were paid to the ownership?
I was told that only only one of the motels, probably the worst one, did not have good collection rates, but most of the rest, I think, were. Paying. So I agree. The majority of the renters, it was not their fault.
And that's tragedies. These folks. By and large. Played the game by the rules. And now they're going to get thrown out on their ears. Unless the community can come together and find some way. To get these folks. In a safe habitat. But I think I'm probably stealing your thunder here. Chris Shackleton, Chris Lawrence, do you?
I mean, I think you're, I don't think all is lost. I mean, occupied rental units are are very attractive to investment. Just because I, so I don't think everything's lost yet. So hopefully, I hope we can come to resolutions, but it's possible. Well, right, and and that property, when it comes up for sale, someone's gonna buy it. Because, you know, even if it sells for a dollar, someone's gonna buy it and hopefully will invest the money into it and. Either keep it online or put it back online. And hopefully that would help. Some of the same folks.
I I agree with those. I think the the biggest challenge is that those, the the five of the five motels that this individual owned. Housed the. The majority of the folks that are there. Will not. Did not qualify or couldn't get into or have a good stepping stone into more traditional apartments. And due to whether it's their own life choices or various other things, and the biggest problem with any developer buying these places is that they will not want. To retain the existing tenants. So no matter what, I guess in my, the the thing that I am concerned about is the short term. Issue until the tax sale in August is. You know, how do we make sure that? The city doesn't experience pretty much a. Small homelessness crisis due to this mass kind of foreclosure all at once. And hopefully we can kind of, hopefully, you know, folks just find a place to go. But just kind of on the record, any landlords out there that, you know. Are willing to look into some of these tenants and are willing to look at fair market vouchers, I think community action. You know, can kind of come alongside and take with some of the risks. So anyway.
Well, I would just ask, I mean, Kelly didn't. If I read your email correctly today, I mean, the situation's kind of changed with those properties.
Yeah, the legal counsel for county treasurer did find a paper ruling that said. Those utilities need to go back on. And she has done that at all five locations. The electricity has been turned back on. And I know she's been working with the city regarding the water because I believe the water is scheduled to go up before the first of. Of the month, which is what her notice had indicated that they need to be out by two first. I know that she has worked personally with all the people that have called her. And she has called churches, she has called Red Cross, she's used the two one one number. I mean, she is losing sleep over the fact that this is happening. She's done a very good job. She did have. One of the newspapers come in today and do a story and they said they, you know, would tell both sides, but it is very unfortunate for the renters. But their electricity is back on. And she'll be working with the city on that water and just we'll have to take it day by day and see what comes next.
Also, if I read correctly, it might not be ready for sale the eighteen. Was there a, was there a late email?
No, what they, if we would have kept going down the same path. They feel that there would have been more and more lawsuits, and then if there's a lawsuit outstanding come August eighteenth, then we would, then it would not be up for sale. And so then it was just gonna sit for a whole new three year. So legal counsel thought this was the the better way to go.
And and the water and. Electric are in whose name?
The electric is not in Chippewa County's name.
May I ask one other? I I was. I don't know if administrative church had the answer to this. I was asking if there was a way based on that federal law, or perhaps our legal counsel could look into this. Is to have some sort of end date, you know. Because to me, it's about buying a little bit of time. For the tenants to keep moving along and finding a place to go, but if if. There would, if there are lawsuits or what have you that continue to drag out, it seems like there should be. At some point where the county should not have to continue to. For that bill. And it's kind of an unexpected change of opinion that I didn't think was gonna happen, so. I I don't know if that's something we should look into farther is. Can we have some sort of end? End date on utilities?
We collect those utilities from the tenants. They pay us, I mean, they pay the county for their rent utilities now, or we we just put the bill?
I don't think. They they've already paid.
Yeah, I don't think we want to get in a position where.
We don't want to be a land, that's what I'm saying. That's what they're getting thrown into if we have to supply their.
Electricity form. I thought I'd read in there that one of those emails that. If they do buy it and they want to go in there and clean it all out, they've got to kick everybody out.
Well, they got to give them ninety days.
And that takes us out of our, it's it's a hot mess. I mean.
I would like to, I mean, I did it. The the one interesting piece of feedback from the property owner was. That we, as a county, should have a plan for the future if this happens, if we. Have a future foreclosure issue where there are mass. You know, tenants and now now that we're aware of this federal law regarding. You know, continuation of utilities or what have you, to have some sort of strategy, which I don't, I don't have one in my head, but I think it's something to think about. And to be actively, I know we'll be actively working on this.
Well, if if it's short term, we do like Gaylor did with the ice room and stuff like that. We can set up shelters and stuff like that, but this is gonna be more than. Couple days or a couple weeks. This is, this is long term, because. There's only so much housing available. And then then what do you do? Do we ask other communities? And then, then what do you do, do we ask other communities, do we ask Lewis County, do we ask Schoolcraft County? Do you have any place we could send our people, but then if they're working here. They would have to leave their job to, to have a home and then they'd lose the home because they don't have a, a job, it's just maddening.
I guess I would, I would like to suggest that we continue to actively work on ways to encourage the folks there to move. Move out and find other places, I think it's, you know, just a matter of. Each individual that lives there to continue to look for other rental options and hopefully the market will. Uh, absorb them over time, but um, that's something I, I guess I'm not quite sure who is leading that charge. Uh, cause I know the city has folks involved and the county as well, um, but you know, just look, I I think we should look into our, our. The timeline.
You know, I was just thinking, if nothing else, with college just let out, there, you would think some housing probably opened up some apartments throughout the community.
Absolutely.
With kids, you know, moving out, they're usually, they don't get taken again until they come back in the fall. They're available now, so may, maybe that will create some openings in the market.
So that would buy us some time.
Yes, the, the rent rates are the problem, I think. You know, he he was offering lower rents than a lot of what people, other folks want, but I'll quit laboring it.
It's a conversation.
Administrator Church, anything you wanna add to this discussion? Does anybody else have any?
Yeah, real quick, I did have a uh uh conference over in Escanaba with the uh Upper Peninsula County Commissioners. Uh, it was, it was actually very good, we had representation from all the offices, elected offices, right from the governor on down. And um, they're all speaking the same song, they don't know how much, they don't know what the budget's gonna be, they don't know where the money's gonna come from. They don't know how much money they're going to have, and we're all waiting on the federal government to find out about the grants and 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 what's. The resources that are available, so when boiled right down to it, that's what they all had to say. We're uh, there, there is some movement trying to um. Regain control of uh zoning for solar and wind. Ax my taxes is up and running again. It's unclear if they're gonna be able to get their signatures, but their, the language has been certified. Um, what was the, oh, uh. The, the, the senators down in southeast Michigan are still working hard on a statewide septic code. So.
Why can't they just leave us alone?
I don't know, they just can't stop, they, they uh. You know, yeah.
It's just not feasible, it's just not.
No.
And why they can't see that?
It's, it's feasible for them because it would help out their, their municipalities. It would, it would, it would force the rural folks down there to go to a municipal water treatment center, of course, there would be the accompanying fees. And I can, I can understand where, you know, you look at a city like Detroit that's lost. Half of its population almost now, so it has infrastructure for twice as many people that half as many people are paying for. So they're looking for ways to scramble, keep that huge infrastructure going.
Anything else?
I would move that way.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sorry.
Apologize, uh, I just wanted to um, a- address um, some of the issues with with Nebeish Islanders. One is. We are not the boss of you, we are not the boss of Yuktah. I really am hoping that Lansing will do what, what we've talked about, what we sent down there, what, what our resolution was all about. So that you have your voice, because our, our hands are generally speaking. Our, our hands are tied, we, they are, if this was the sheriff's department or this was, was the courts department or treasurer's department, we have things we can do. Yuktah is not our baby. Um, it's, it's, it, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we're basically a pass through for money, I mean, that's, that's. We, we give them thirty thousand a year because of an oil crisis twenty years ago?
It was nearly twenty years ago.
Um, that, that, you know, so we give them. Pennies, uh, really, and um, the, 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 the reality is. Yuktah doesn't just represent people on the island, it also represents, you know, all of Lewis County's, all the buses, I mean, there's, there's a, a bunch of things. That they do and they are, are generally an independent agency, um. And 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 I'm just hoping that, that Lansing will, will find a way. Um, and, and I know there, there are concerns about, well, will um, will Pete uh obey the letter of the law? Uh, if, if this money does come forth and, and is, is to be used for just Nebeish Island, he will follow the law. Um, and we all know money from Lansing and D C always has strengths, they're going to, if this is just for Nebeish Island. If, if what we sent down there happens. That money's gonna stay just for Nebeish Island, now, um, you know, we've already talked about, you know, they'll have to hire a crew or at least a halftime crew. Stuff like that, um, but we are not in a position to, to, in, in, and I don't, I know I. Would not feel comfortable um, eviscerating the board. Uh, whether it be over, over a, a year or two years or whatever, um, because. We don't see eye to eye with them on, on one subject, because what they do is more than just ferry service. Uh, the other thing that I'm mortally, and this is after talking to M dot, concerned with. Is um, as things in the state of Michigan kind of weren't going well in the past. Um, other entities like Yuktah uh had their, their match, if you will, go from fifty percent to forty. To thirty, in other words, for, for every. Let's just say they want something for a million dollars, uh, they've got to come up with seven hundred thousand and the state's gonna come up with three hundred thousand. Did I say that right?
Well, well, depending on which, which way you're talking.
The, the, the state is only gonna contribute thirty percent and the entity is gonna have to do seventy percent. We in Yuktah have been left at fifty, we've been left alone at fifty fifty match. And my fear is that the people downstate, you know, those same people you're talking about, are gonna say, whoa, why do they get fifty percent match? And we only get twenty five or thirty, bull, and they've got the votes to do something about it, so we do have to kind of tread lightly here. Um, because I, I, I don't even want to imagine a future where the ferry system becomes. Like Mackinac Island, I mean, that would be unsustainable. For all three islands, I mean, can you imagine forty bucks round trip each time? Um, I mean, it's, it's, that's, that's our reality, I'm hoping Lansing, um, I've tried three times today to get hold of uh, of Senator DeMose. Maybe I should have Mr. Trainor call you, uh, maybe overturn his call, but um, um, I, I really. And and I just wanted to confirm with him that, that there will be strings to this money and that money will be dedicated. To um, Nebeish Islands, trying to, to solve Nebeish Islands problems as well as we can. Uh, but we, we, we really aren't in a, in a, in a position to make any promises, um, plain and simple, so. Uh, also would like to thank all the people who spoke today, very professional, uh, very calm, very not hot. Uh, it's one of the things that, that I'm most proud of, of our commission is, we. We handle things in a professional way and uh, and this meeting today and, and all to the Nebeish Island people. Really, you know, very calm, very matter of fact and uh, and very well done, and we talked about civics lesson. You all are a great civics lesson of getting involved and, and doing this, I mean, this is great. Uh, it's good for our kids and our grandkids to see that, that our government still works, we're not perfect, sometimes we get a little hot, but, but all in all. Uh, and I'd like to thank you for uh, for your time and your attention, I, I, I don't wanna make you miss your ferry, for heaven's sakes, um, so.
Okay, about forty five seconds, I just want, first of all, I agree with you, I understand the frustration, I'm sympathetic, I'm always happy to listen. Uh, but I agree with you that the Yuktah is just, it's not a part of Chippewa County, it's like the, the road commission's not a part of Chippewa County. The, the schools, the city, the, you know, they're, they're not, they're not under our purview, we, we don't fund them, we don't manage them. They don't answer to us, um, but, but sure, we're happy to listen and, and, and talk and discuss. Specifically though, regarding the, I did look up, because I was curious where this funding would come from. If it should happen, and I found the transportation budget that is moving forward in the legislature. And there is a placeholder in there right now, and what they do with a placeholder on a line item is that they stick a hundred dollars there. And that's just called a placeholder, the placeholder is says specifically to restore nighttime runs to Nebeish Island. So, so there you go, that's, if, if that placeholder gets fully funded, it will be for that exclusive purpose. And uh, where that gets done along the process, it could happen in several different places. Um, and but currently, it's, it's at the placeholder stage of being a hundred dollars and that bill is moving between the House and the Senate. And, you know, we'll eventually get to the governor's desk and we'll certainly have changes to it between now and then.
Thank you.
Ten seconds, I just wanted to say, I, I think our commission is still, I'm not sure that we're all unified on this subject. Uh, there's a lot of discussion that continues to, to happen, uh, one of the biggest things that I believe. Is that even though we maybe do not have direct uh, control of these various units. Yuktah is not elected by the citizens, so, and, and other boards out there that are not elected by the citizens of Chippewa County. They do not have to answer technically to anybody, so the only option for citizens is to come to us. And we have the ability to influence, we have the ability to uh, to call, call for change, we may not be able to force change. But I do think that that's why people keep coming to us, because we're the ones elected by the people, I just wanna remind uh, each of us that. That, the, 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 the other folks are appointed, not elected, and therefore there's a separate. A little bit too far a separation sometimes from the public.
I've been, I, I, yeah, it's, all, all we can do is, I mean, I've been able to speak with the board members and the administration, try to get something, you know. Relieve something rolling, that's all we can do is make suggestions and, and offer, offer ideas, just like anybody else, so.
Okay.
Do you do that? I, I'd support that.
Okay.
Motion and support.